I'll do that. Welcome everyone to iMatters Virtual Town Hall Meeting. I am your host Sherrell Diamond Hogan and I am here with some amazing, amazing, amazing ladies. And, and Sir David Salter, thank you so much for joining. Ms. Caprice James, you can introduce yourself and then Lisa and then David and then we will get into our virtual town hall meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Caprice James Sherrell again. Thank you so much for having this important conversation. I am the founder and CEO of Sales Girls Incorporated. We are a international nonprofit, so we service young women and girls across seven countries and on three continents. And domestically, particularly, we're based in Maryland, so we actually have a mentoring program. And we have a mentoring program that focuses on young women and young men, even though we're sales girls. So I'm super excited about this conversation because this month is half is a mentoring month. And this week is a mentoring summit, so it is so perfect for us to be having this conversation. So thank you again for having me tonight.
Okay, and my name is Lisa Savage. I am licensed clinical social worker. I have a practice called the Center for Child Development, which is the largest black owned mental health practice in the country and it's located in Delaware and I feel very proud to say that. So my practice focus is primarily on children and adolescents. And I am very acquainted with the struggles that children and teens are experiencing these days and how the pandemic has heightened those. So I'm looking forward to sharing with you all from a mental health perspective, what children are dealing with.
I said I wasn't going to mute myself, but I end up doing it. Thank you. We appreciate you both for being here and next, Mr. David Salter.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is David Salter. As was just mentioned, I'm the co-founder and executive director of Community Collaboration of Delaware. We are a newer nonprofit, local nonprofit based in Delaware, obviously by the name. And we incorporated with the mission to collaborate with other organizations to help people succeed. And that is, that is truly our mission in every sense of the word, no matter what project that we do or that we work on with other groups. It is, it is based to help other people succeed. And in the last two years, we incorporated in November of 2019, we have been pretty successful in doing so. We have had a multi-pronged approach. Where we've been able to meet people where they are in the community. We have provide care and case management services to individuals who are suffering from a substance abuse disorder, substance, excuse me, abuse disorder. My brother has been in and out of recovery programs since he was about eighteen, right before he went to his first class in college, actually. He had ended up going to rehab instead and has been dealing with that for the better part of the last decade. So we have a, a large emphasis there. We can cater up to fifty people at one time in five different recovery homes, all located in Newcastle County. We're looking to expand as we grow this next two to three year increment of time. We also provide different community outreaches, whether that's us leading the way in that community outreach or collaborating with other local groups. Could be anything from goods for a local parent who needs a helping hand to go into Battery Park to clean up trash down by the Delaware River. And then we also are hoping to bring back, we were successful in providing some cost-effective youth programming. At the onset, right after we incorporated before COVID really took hold. And our goal now, as we hopefully can get back to some normalcy, I feel like I've been saying that for two years now. But as we can get back to some normalcy, we would love to be able to provide and continue to help youth and their parents by providing cost-effective programs. That really make a difference and that really serve a purpose in their structure and their intention. And there is a development behind them, someone like Ms. Ms. Diamond, who is supporting the social emotional side. Someone like Ms. Deja Jackson, who also was on here, who hasn't got the chance to speak yet, on the youth development side for the programmatic side of things. And just trying to make sure that we're providing resources that are wholesome and that really truly make a difference for families' lives and the cost effective in the process.
I love it all. I'm here for it all. I love, love, love what everybody brings to the table and how we all service the community. Ms. Deja, did you want to say anything? We appreciate you for joining. She might come in later.
Speaking of parenting and teens, Ms. Deja is mama five. Is that her name?
She said, I can tell my own story.
No, 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 no. I was just saying, I'm just here to, um, to listen.
Okay, not a problem. We appreciate you all again for joining and being a part of the conversation. Again, this is a conversation, just information to give you tools to help you navigate through your children's lives, the neighborhood kids' lives. You know, some people call my other moms aunties, extended families. We wanted to make sure that we equipped you to be able to thrive in your life and help the people around you. Just to give you a little background about me, I am a prevention advocate. I do a lot of work with trauma, with domestic violence, sexual assault. Suicide and violence, I'm trying to remember all the things that I do, right? Bullying. But where there's trouble, where there's trauma, there's Ms. Diamond, basically. If I don't know what it is, I will find a way to get information to you. I'm the community auntie. I travel globally. I actually met Ms. Caprice, we were just talking about that in Africa when I visited in Liberia. I'm all about connections, collaboration, impact, empowering, I mean, empowering the community, but also equipping you to thrive in life. We want you to know how to use the tools that we give you, not just know of something, but actually be able to utilize it so that it is actually prevalent in your life. And it is evident in the people's lives that you touch. Tonight, we're going to have the conversation about teens. They are suffering in surround sounds. You know, people say suffering in silence and these teens, young adults are not silent. They are not how we grew up, like being quiet, keeping it all in. These youth may not use their voices, but they are their, how they feel or is expressed in their actions and their behaviors. And with so many platforms to express this behavior, not being able to filter, not being able to engulf their emotions, to really understand their emotions. Have the intellect to be able to process things, acting out behaviors is how they are using their voice. So again, this is a conversation, feel free to leave questions in the comments. If you want to be anonymous on here, but still want your question answered, you can email me. I'm gonna put my email in the chat and you can email me and I will utilize your question without using your name. I'm all about giving you answers. You don't have to expose yourself, but I really want to make sure that you get the answers that you need. We are here to cry help and hope. That's what we're here for. So tonight is an event just to have a conversation. So we're going to get started. And I just wanted to share the screen real quick to be able to show you what we're going to be talking about tonight. In a sense of, um, this thing will not move. There we go. Can everybody see my screen? Yes. Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk to you about situations that young adults and teens go through. And how that goes from their situation to actually how it shows up in their life, how it shows up in the community, how it shows up in social media. When they can't use their voices, this is what, um, this is how things happen. So I teach this to young adults and, um, and, and adults. But every day of your life, it starts at the end. It's called Facts of Life. Every day of your life, we all have situations. It happens to everybody from birth. We all have situations. And with our situations directly attached to that, we have feelings attached. And because of our feelings, we act out on our feelings. Causes changes in our life, good or bad, but the bad ones can become threatening situations. And this is what we're going to be talking about tonight, how we're going to talk about the situations that our young adults find themselves in, the feelings that they have expressed to us as their mentors, as their stewards, as their guardians in a sense, or stewards in the community, in the community, and also the changes that we have seen them go through in life. The changes in their behavior and their attitude, maybe in their physical, um, physical persona. And what we see every day, too much every day on social media, in the news is the threats, um, direct threats on their life, whether it's suicide. Or threat to other people in the community, which is violence. So this is a quick way to think about things, the facts of life. And we will get started in a conversation and we'll come back to another slide. So ladies and gentlemen, anyone can start. What do you see happening in the community? What do you see happening with the young adults that you steward over? Some of the top things with the young ladies and the young men, um, the situations that they have expressed to you that they have to deal with.
A lot of what I see from a mental health perspective, and I know we've all heard this term is, is the impact of trauma and how it impacts children and adolescents. And it affects their learning, their emotions, their behaviors. Oftentimes, what I find is that they get misdiagnosed, they get mischaracterized. Um, and they are not offered the opportunity to have treatment to resolve some of the traumas that they've experienced. So that can then lead to a myriad of other problems. And when, when I think about, I used to do some volunteer work at the Women's Correctional in, uh, in Newcastle. And I would find these amazingly brilliant women, they're just really smart women, and I would wonder, how did they end up in prison? And one of the things, or a couple of things that I realized that happened were, uh, they had compounded trauma that was never addressed. Um, and then that led to a series of rejections in their lives, uh, failure to progress academically. And then choosing lifestyles that then of course landed them in jail. And so my objective personally is to help to somehow interrupt that process for children. To be a resource for children and families so that they recognize they have other options.
Yeah, Lisa, I agree. So I, um, being on the ground and especially in this, this pandemic. During this pandemic and what the youth are talking about and how they're feeling and even just today having discussion with many of my youth. About what is it that you want people to know? What are you experiencing? And these kids are experiencing sleep deprivation. They're experiencing anxiety, depression, they are burnt out. You know, they were isolated for two years and so now they're back into the schools. And everybody wants to, um, to perform well, where their performance is not going to be well because their mental health is not well. And, and they've gone from, they were in school, let's say an eighth grader, they didn't have their transition to ninth grade. And now they're in tenth grade and everybody's trying to figure out, well, why aren't they doing well? Well, they had to teach themselves for two years because some thrive very well. I have some kids that have been thriving well in the virtual environment. And then I have kids that were struggling in the environment, especially some of my kids that are freshmen in college now. And they are really struggling every day. Like Ms. Caprice, I don't even know if I can go to class and I understand what I'm doing because I missed two years of school, like being in school. So you know, there's a lot of increased suicide. And I know me and Lisa, we were talking about that earlier and just gonna talk about that more. But even today, I got a message from, you know, a parent in our community whose son attempted suicide last night. And so, you know, these kids are, you know, seeing a lot of bullying more in the school. We have more fights in our schools than we have ever had in our little rural community. And so they, they're trying to figure out, how do we take all the things that we've experienced these last two years? Be well, do well, and be able to perform. So that's what I'm seeing with a lot of the kids. And then of course, their parents are stressed out because they're burnt out as well. So you know, I, I really, the one thing that I've enjoyed during the pandemic was every week, me and my youth had talks. And then they would also, just like we're having these conversations, they would come together and just bring all the youth together to just talk about whatever was going on. And sometimes we were bringing other professionals, but it's great to hear what they are saying. And so that's how we're able, as it's my team, to go in and support them and their families. But it does not look good. You know, the surgeon general put out a national emergency on youth and their mental health is where we are right now. And it's not a, like, we grew up, you know, you can't say anything. No, these, these kids are seeing everything and they're acting out in many different ways. So we really need to pay attention. And as adults, we have to listen. You definitely have to listen. So that's, that's what I'm seeing just on a day to day with the youth that I serve.
David, did you want to chime in? Lisa, uh, Caprice and Lisa hit so many buzzwords. You guys know I am a wordy person. I was like, oh, they use my words. And I went way to last because I'm a talker too. So David, go ahead and share what you've, um, what you've experienced or observed from the youth that you've encountered.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to it. Caprice, that you were just mentioning about just having a safe space for youth to feel like they have an adult that they can trust. In a group like setting that they can speak candidly and they can express themselves. And in this pandemic world that we find ourselves in now two years going on to the third full year. There's even less resources. In a state like Delaware, you have purchase of care that ends at age twelve. And then you have all of these kids that just had all these different resources at their disposal. Because they had certain programs that they could access, now they no longer have access to that. And then they find themselves where? After school. And a lot of my background, excuse me, I didn't mention this earlier, is within youth development in the after-school environment. I have placed my doctoral studies on hold during COVID, but when I was doing my research, my focus was on after-school programming and impacts that they can have on social behavior and on academics. And all the literature supports the need for more of these type of community-based resources that are free or cost-effective. And that parents and youth feel safe in sending their kids to. And we have less of them now than we did before the pandemic. So you don't have these safe spaces because maybe in a surge like we're in right now, they may shut that program down. Or you see in some of the prison settings, they pull those programs first. They're pulling people out of these programs in an attempt to keep the people who would be going in to provide these type of community-based resources. To these individuals, whether it's in school or whether it's in an after-school setting. And they're pulling them because they're deeming it not safe, but they're then telling the kids, well, you still have to go to school. It's still safe for you to go to school. It's just not safe for us to bring in outside resources to support you. So now they're getting even less resources. So for me, just seeing what I've seen, a lot of that was through the PAL of Delaware. And I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, that organization tonight. It is a great resource for local families. It's from eight to eighteen years old. There's three of them from the PAL of Delaware located in Newcastle County. And there's another one, the Wilmington PAL that's located in Wilmington. So there's four PALS total in Newcastle County, Delaware. They're all free. You can go there after school, either kids can be sent or parents can send their kids there after school, rather. It's a safe environment. There are adults there that can provide structured programs. That is where Sherrell and I actually met. That is where Ms. Deja and myself met. That's where we were able to collaborate and work together and create programs and cultivate those programs and develop programs and see some of these successes come from working with the youth. Again, where and meeting them where they're at and having real conversations and letting them know, we're here for you. And we want to just try to show you a better way forward, but you're doing that with the experience of saying, hey, I'm going to listen to you guys. And we're going to put a plan together that works for all of us. And I really think if we can get to that, especially as we can get to spring and hopefully get past this current surge. And we can provide more of these programs to youth and let them know that they're available and that their parents know that they're available. Then they're going to feel like they actually can send their kids somewhere safe and the kids are going to want to go there.
I have, um, thanks for that, Dave. I have, um, I travel and do group work with teens, young adults from elementary school to high school. Some young adult classes, um, transitioning into college. Um, and there is, they deal with identity crisis. They deal with being valued, being loved, dysfunctional homes. Just a lot of things happening within the home. We used to think home was a safe place. It's not often a safe place for most of these teens, especially with the pandemic. We had an issue when we first had the pandemic that food for youth was a big issue. Because sometimes only time they get a good meal or a couple of meals is at school. So, um, you know, they were not getting, um, you know, some, some kids did not experience getting meals at home, going to the correctional facility for young adults here, um, in Delaware, over at Ferris. And, um, schools over there, the cottages over there, those young men and young ladies, they seem so hard. They seem so tough. These are young kids, teenagers, pre-teens that are literally in a baby jail. They are literally in a baby jail because of their, the behaviors they express and the situations they found themselves in. And as tough as they seemed when I got there, they were like, when is Diamond coming back? Because I am mama bear and I don't play no games. You know, they were like, um, the COs and the teachers like, um, we thought we would have to step in, but you handle that. I don't play no games because I know what brings the behavior out. The toughest one, these young men there are trying to survive. They can't be seen as weak. So even if I have to disrespect you as an adult, I'd rather disrespect you who you can't do anything to me. Versus being in here with other people, my peers that can harm me. You know, they smell fear. So they're literally fighting for their lives. Young girls that have had miscarriages, three, four miscarriages, and only fourteen, fifteen years old. Being maternal health educator, nurse educator for Newcastle County, for a school for pregnant and parenting teens. I had a student, um, we had a student as young as ten years old within the whole county. As soon as you can have a period, you can have a baby. What do these young kids do with young minds that have not processed dealing with adult situations? Adults can't even handle the pandemic. How can we expect these young kids to handle the pandemic? Couple of other things, um, just want to touch on, and I know we, I want to spread it around, but one of the big things for my girls was, um, absent parent. And you know, when you say that, you, um, back in the day, we used to always go to, oh, the father's absent because mom is always there. But these days, mom is not always there. Sometimes the absent parent is the mother. And the young ladies and young men that I had in my groups would literally perform to get the acceptance, to get the, um, to get the love or the attention for the absent parent. And they will take the parent that's there every day in the trenches with them for granted. And, and totally discard them because you have to love me. But this one right here, I'mma perform and do whatever it takes to get this attention from that absent parent. And for some reason, the absent parent is manipulative with that love, with that attention. And it breaks these kids' hearts. And so they go looking for love and acceptance in other places and they find themselves in situations that, you know, was too much to chew. You know, it was too much for them to chew and digest. It was too much for them, whether it's pregnancy, most of my girls at the, um, center will find out when they were pregnant. But when they found out they're pregnant, at the same time, they found that they had multiple STDs. Because you, nobody was checking for that. When you're pregnant, they do other tests. So now we're dealing with layers of trauma off of one decision. So that's what we're going to talk about tonight. I want to talk about what we see in the behaviors that we see expressed in our community so that we can best serve you as our community. To provide you again with tools, education, give you insight to what's going on in other teens' minds. Because we know your child is perfect. We know this is not your child. I'm not, you know, we don't want to direct anything directly at parents. We know you are doing your best, but your children come in contact with other teens who are experiencing multiple layers of unprocessed trauma. And it will come out and it will hit your home because of the association, whether it's directly or indirectly in the community. Again, I talk a lot. Um, does anyone have anything to add to that before I go to the next, um, to the next slide? Or anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to add, um, in my community, I will say violence, um, gun violence, theft. Wherever the trauma is coming from disrespect, I, since I've been home, I see so many kids that aren't even going to school. And I don't know if it was, um, not having what they needed to participate virtually. Or if they don't have the parents or grandparents or, you know, anybody there to check one now.
Yeah.
I wanted to speak quickly on the mental health aspect. Um, you guys did, you, everything that you said, I'm over here like preach, preach. With four children still in school, two were very, very successful virtually and the other two did not do well at all. And I can, I could see how it was, uh, messing with their minds and there was no outlet but me. So then it's, I have five children, but four of them are still in school. It, it just still felt like, you know, as from the parent's aspect, now you have five children with no other outlet. Outside of just, just me, you know? So it definitely, it, it takes a toll. It's taking a toll on, on everyone. And working or being at the PAL for so long and then transitioning into my, um, children's school. You know, the kid, the kids are different. When you're in the city of Wilmington and just like you said, you know, I've had experience with, you know, the children at Grace Cottage in Ferris as well. They are different, but when they're out here in these streets feeling like they have to fight for their life, or I don't know if they're fighting to eat. Or it is just the, to save face, um, it's getting bad. My children are walking distance from a community center that I have never let them step foot inside of in five years because it's bad. It's not a safe place for children. It's not a safe place for adults. When you, you know, can get a weapon inside the building and they're just shooting, I'm like, everybody's life is at stake. So as bad as I want my kids in those free, because you know, they are free programs. I don't think risking their life is worth it. So just, you know, in the city of Wilmington, we, we gotta do better.
Thank you for sharing, Deja. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anybody want to have anything to say before we go to the next, um, I'm trying to watch Facebook and answer questions or anything like that and check my emails at the same time. So I am paying attention. I'm just multitasking over here. I am my team tonight. Does anyone have anything else to add before we go to the next slide? Oh, one of the things I did want to say, and Deja brought it up, um, just about them surviving and when I work with the young folks, I was trying to give them, if you weren't here, where do you see yourself at? Like make a PSA for yourself, you know, future year for them to dream. And everyone wanted to be a rap artist. Everyone wanted to do this. And I'm like, there are other things out there. And for them, it wasn't about being a rap artist. It was the money that came with it to be able to take care of their family. Some of these young boys are taking care of their mothers. Some of the mothers or parents are addicted to drugs and they have other siblings. And these young kids have to be adults and be the parent, the big brother, the big sister, and they take on, you know, jobs or join gangs or just anything to get money. So it wasn't about the profession, but it was about the, the stuff that came with the profession. So they wouldn't have to scrape and beg. And it's, I, I totally, when they said that, I totally got it. So we're pushing for them to go to college. They're like, I'm trying to make it through today, Ms. Diamond. I'm trying to make it to tomorrow morning, Ms. Diamond. You talk a good game, but that ain't my reality. So you know, just trying to show them a future beyond that and show that even some of these rappers have moved on from the gang banging and, you know, the females and liquor that they rap about to owning their own company, doing movies. You know, owning other things and the people that they look up to aren't even doing the things they rap about now, you know? So just showing them other parts of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say you, with you hitting on that, Sherrell, it is exposure, right? It is about what, what our, what our kids are exposed to. Like I, like I said, here in, in Charles County in Maryland, so I'm in Southern Maryland, very rural area, very agriculture. Most of it has always been farming. And now you have a lot of transients that are moving in. And so one of the biggest things that I see and as Ms. Deja was talking about, like just the violence is, is, is the community, is that community itself. So I'm in the homes with these children. I know their grandparents, their parent, you know, because I want one, their parents to know who I am, but it's about exposing the kids. Just even tonight, I was setting up appointments to take my kids to Annapolis to go to the state capitol. Because it's about that exposure of what they need to see, you know, and, and understanding because they don't want to be doing what they're doing. But you're right, it's survival mode. But it's up to us to give them another outlet. When they have another outlet and they can see exposure to other activities. Because my kids know, I never push college on everyone because college isn't for everyone. And I know plenty of friends that have four-year degrees and it was a waste of time. They struggle. It's not for everyone. We, we technically do college, technical, something, you need to do something, but we have to know that kid to know exactly what they need to put them on that path. And, you know, I've been harping all my mentorship.
Yeah.
Mentorship. You have to be the person you needed when you were a kid and that's what adults forget. You know, I, I am here where I am today because I had great mentors and I came from a divorce. You know, my parents divorced when I was very young. My dad was there, but my dad was angry with my mom. So he was very absent from me. So I was that girl that looked at attention for other things, but So I was that girl that looked at attention for other things, but because of the women in my life is why I am where I am today. And, and I don't realize it sometimes, but I go back home and they go, oh, you're from here. Cause people forget, I'm from a little town in South Carolina, this little country girl. And I have been all over the world. And so, but it was the mentors. And, and so that survival mode, you don't have to stay with what you grew up in. You can change it, but it's the mentors in your life. So.
Lisa, I'll piggyback on that too. Um, here in Baltimore, we have, um, a group of kids, what they call the squeegee kids. And they're on street corners and they're washing, washing your windows of your car. And they, there's a lot of controversy about these children. I have gotten to know them, um, or some of them, a group of them that, uh, are on the highway just north of where I live. And one of the things that I've learned about some of these young men, and it's kind of what you said, Sherrell, is that they're, they're hustling to take care of their families. So they're, they're not on a dangerous highway just because it's fun. They're on this dangerous highway cleaning your window shell, shield because they need the money. Um, so there's one kid in particular that I just absolutely adore. Um, and every time I see him, I give him money. Always, I, I don't carry cash, but I do when I know I'm going to go on that corner because I want to be able to have some cash to give to this kid or to, to the other kids that are in the corner. But this one kid in particular, who's just really like stolen my heart. I don't even know the kid's name. Um, but we have this connection. He calls me mom. Hey mom, how you doing? It's the cutest thing. So one day, um, and, and this, this illustrates the importance of connection with teens, even if they're not your own kids. One day, um, I saw him, didn't have a lot of time because the light had changed. And he said, Mom, you probably didn't recognize me. I got my hair cut. And I was like, yeah, and you look great. You look fantastic. So the light changed. I was pulling up and he, I could see him in my rearview mirror just waving to me. And it was the most touching, beautiful moment that I experienced. But having, but connecting with children is just so important, not judging them. A lot of my neighbors will judge them. They'll be all next door neighbor talking about them. But I've gotten to know them on a different level. Um, and I know that underneath, you know, that gruff appearance, there's some vulnerable children. Um, and so, you know, I always give them money if the kids, and they're asking, you know, I never, I very rarely ask them to clean my window shield. But I always give them money because I know them. But that's also my way of building that rapport. And I said to the one kid, listen, you be safe. Did you go to school today? Did you eat? Just to, to have that connection so that he knows when he sees his red car coming, he knows it's Ms. Lisa. Um, I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna put my window down. I'm gonna be polite and kind to him. I'm gonna care about him. It goes a long way. Um, so like you were saying, Caprice, the mentoring, and that's a very informal way of mentoring a kid. Um, we don't, like I said, I don't know the kid's name. But it's, it's powerful and it is a way of having that kid know that at least somebody in this world cares about me.
Yeah.
It's that positive reinforcement that you're getting from an adult that is safe. That, I mean, and that's where I go back to the different programs that we were able to operate at the PAL. You knew that you were in with the kids if you were a male and they started calling you Coach Dave. And if you were female, they started calling you Miss or Mom. And then you knew, I mean, you knew that you were in and you, you had that bond with that child or that group of children. And I would always tell the staff and Sherrell and, and Deja, I'm sure you guys had heard me, you know, had heard me say this at different times to other staff members. I didn't have so much say this to either one of you. Don't judge that child. You don't know what's going on at their home. When they walk through those doors, you have no idea what they experienced through the school day. You have no idea what they experienced at home. And we're all human. We all get frustrated. We all make our mistakes. We do a lot of that as adults. But taking that step back and realizing that they may have had, had an awful day from the time that they got up or that they didn't sleep good because of where they slept. Or was it cold in the house? Did they wake up? I mean, I just heard something. It was, I watched the video and it was, and it was a student talking, an older high school student talking to teachers and the teachers had asked them what, from their student perspective, that they would give as advice to a new teacher. And the students are just speaking about poker chips. And now every kid does not have the same amount of poker chips. One kid wakes up with a hundred, a hundred poker chips. And he wakes up, or she wakes up in a warm home with both parents and food's ready. And they get I love yous and they have a, hey, have a good day and we'll see you later. And they're security. And they go to school and they know that, that, that security is there. They know that they're going home to that. And then there's another child that woke up sleeping on the floor, sleeping on someone's couch. They didn't have breakfast made. Mom or dad forgot lunch. And they're going to school and they may not have got showered, then they get made fun of for how they smell or how they look. And we know all too well, Sherrell, how many kids get made fun of for their appearance or what they wear, the shoes on their feet.
Yeah.
And now you can't get away from it. They're going home and then they're on their phone and they're on their tablet. And they're getting made fun of in the virtual world. And then it starts over the next day. Well, that kid who may have started the day with 20 poker chips, he's, or she's down to five poker chips at the end of the day. But we as adults, as, as professionals in the after-school environment, as teachers, as counselors, we can give more of those poker chips by just doing what you said, Lisa. By just stopping, hey, how are you? Did you go to school? I'm looking for you. I want to know about you. Please be safe. I'll see you next time. Here's five bucks.
Yeah.
And you could have just changed that whole person's day around for one simple act. So Lisa, thank you for, for, for what you do. And I mean, Caprice, same for you. I mean, it's just knowing that there's people out there like us that, that know that these kids just need a positive role model. And, and how much of a difference that that one positive role model can make.
Yeah. And David, sometimes I just want a hug. These babies just want somebody to embrace them. That's it.
And we're definitely going to get into that because I want to make sure that we get, not just talk about the issues, but also give people tools to walk away from like, okay, this is all going on. What can I do? How can I change not, um, not only the community, but especially my household? So we're definitely going to get into that. And Lisa, I know we're going to, um, lead up into what you wanted to discuss. Um, and that is going to do that. You guys hit on so much of what I already prepared for when it comes to, um, with these slides. So, um, just wanted to hit up a little bit on what we just said. Um, you know, the picture on the right, sleep deprivation. These kids, they go to sleep in school and you want to wake them up and it's time for class or this is and that. You don't know what they're going through. Did they have, some kids sleep on the streets at night and go to school for a meal and take a shower in the, um, bathroom? And that's the reality of some of these children. On the left, the young lady in the back, she is somewhere else. She, you know, she, I'm here, but y'all don't know what just happened to me. Sexual assault, domestic violence, not saying this is a young lady's story, but you don't know what she's going through. Um, being bullied, um, we had an issue a couple of years ago here in Delaware where with social media issues going on, a young girl got killed in the morning in the bathroom. Jumped by her quote unquote friends, her classmates, jumped her and killed her in the bathroom. You don't know what these kids are going through. In the bottom picture, social media, everybody wants to be seen. They want to have a platform. They want to go viral. They're looking for, how come nobody liked my picture? Why does somebody else have more likes than I have? You know, it's, 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 it's amazing what they are focused on. And what parents think or adults think children should be focused on is probably on the bottom of the list of what these young kids are actually focused on. And then, um, you know, you have these kids who go through all this. And then one day you have this picture where all of your students are not there. You, you see their stuff. They're so, they should be there. Their desks are full. But where are these children? Who checks up on them? And then you get a, then you have an assembly. Because you saw on social media, oh, somebody wasn't there. Now they, as, um, Caprice said, they tried to commit suicide the night before. They actually, they actually were successful at committing suicide, cutting themselves. Yes, African-American children, African-Americans do cut themselves. And it's, um, you know, it's for the release of pressure going through their mind and their body, not to really harm themselves or to kill themselves. It is a release of pressure that is built up in their body. And that is their way of, um, moving that pressure, that pain inside to come outside. Um, and Lisa will talk more on, on this. And I wanted to go back to this slide and then we'll lead into Lisa. Um, they, they, their life is framed by their perception of themselves. Not, you know, we give them affirmations. We talk good to them. But until they, um, we talk positive into them, but until they embrace that for themselves, their life, their actions, their mindset will always be framed about how they see themselves. And if they see themselves as insecure and outcast, they're lonely. Or, you know, my mom used to tell me, you're just like your dad. And you hear that all the time. That's how you start to see yourself. And they can't separate what is happening to them from who they actually are. And it takes us mentors to have that listening ear. And that's one of the things we want to tell you. We talk one about safe, being a safe space. Everyone says safe space. You have to be a safe space for people. Someone who won't tell their business, judge them. And number two, most importantly, after being a safe place, please listen and not project your own thoughts or assumptions on them. But just listen to what they're saying. Let them get it out. Cause they may be able to process it as they're being able to get it out. Wait a minute, that didn't make sense. Did I really think it like that? Let them talk. Because in talking, especially to someone else who's listening, you'll be able to put the pieces together, not all of them, but get them on the road to a better understanding or maybe a different perception. But please validate what they are feeling. It may not come out the right way. They may be saying it wrong, but their feelings are valid. And people, young adults, older adults, grandmas and pop pops, they live in their life by how they're, from their perception. You can say something is blue all day long, but if I see it as red, I act like it's red. And so, you know, you have to hear what they're saying and hear and validate what, validate their feelings and what they're saying. No, really wasn't a cow that jumped over the moon, but I understand how that cow jumping over the moon made you mad and scared. And that's what we want to reiterate to them. Because if not, we'll always be here having town hall meetings about missing people or a vigilance about somebody else missing. And people say, people always say that person was a good person. I heard she's something like that. Oh, she texted me and I didn't text her back. And you know, you see that even with celebrities. Oh, I should have texted them back. You have to take the time and value the people that you come in contact with. Because depression and suicide is real, real. Self-harm is real, real. And if they don't hurt themselves, they hurt other people through bullying, through violence. You see that. It's no longer fistfights. They're not fighting you. They're coming to the bus stop with broken bottles, with knives from home. And they are jumping kids on the bus stop, shooting each other on the bus stop on the bus, killing each, literally killing each other in bathrooms, literally. So Lisa, I know you wanted to, um, lead into depression and suicide. So I want to hand this off to you and just be mindful of our time. Oh my goodness. We're running out.
How much time do we have left?
It's eight fifteen and I want to, um, I'm just, I want to leave time just if we have any questions, but you're free to go.
Okay. This, this won't be very long at all, but I think it's, um, going to be pretty poignant to what we're talking about, um, tonight. So, um, teens under pressure, let me just, okay. So I know Sherrell, you talked a little bit about suicide. And one of the things that we commonly hear in black communities is that black people don't commit suicide, which is actually untrue, in factually untrue. Um, in, in Delaware this week, there was a well-known social worker in the circle of social workers that I know who actually died by suicide, completed suicide. Um, very devastating. And then yesterday, there was a mayor in Hyatt, Hyattsville, Maryland, who killed himself too, is a young black man. So black people do kill themselves and I think it's really important for us to understand that. But the suicide rate among young black people is increasing faster than any other racial and ethnic group. Black adolescents under the age of 13 are twice as likely to die of suicide than white adolescents. Suicide attempts by self-report have increased 73% by black adolescents over the last 25 years. So I'm going to show you a clip and it's just five minutes, but I thought it was just so powerful. And it, uh, deals with a kid who, um, had a completed suicide. So it's, it could be possibly triggering. Um, so just kind of mind how you're feeling, um, as, as you watch this clip. But let's start this now. Hopefully my wifi will cooperate. Okay. And let me know if you can hear it. To start.
I was often told that I couldn't have children. So knowing that he came, he's my miracle child, truly. And I treated him like he was a miracle and that he was loved every single day. The only thing that he ever said he wanted to be since he was a small child, a superhero. That's it. I knew that he was a gift and that is why he was so exposed to so many things. Because I have seen the world. I just took my time to see it again through his eyes. Yeah, that's my dude.
Shout out to my family. Love you, mama. I love you daddy.
It really is speaking to the love of my husband and I. I saw him, I had him on one day. Seven days later, I saw him again. Seven being the number of completions, seven, uh, being the God's perfect number. But more than anything that I raised him on was, how many times do you forgive your enemy? Seven times seventy.
Tammy Charles and her son Seven are where we're starting this story. What we originally thought was an isolated incident in a suburban Louisville school district ended up being about so much more. According to the Department of Education, 37% of black kids say that they've been bullied over race, the way they talk, or even a disability. And Seven is one of those kids. We backed up his entire story through videos, school records and police reports. This is what happened to Seven.
The very first thing, a little girl called him a nigger on the bus. And then fast forward to next week, he's on the bus and the little girl says, um, well, you know that nigger can't fight. He gets off the bus, runs to his dad and says, Daddy, I got choked on the bus, but don't be mad because I think he has a mental problem.
This kid put him in a headlock to the point where students on the bus were screaming for the bus driver to stop. The bus had to be pulled over. What is the district policy involving physical contact?
We individualize cases. Um, we have the people in place with our bullying prevention team that can review, um, complaints or concerns from families. And they work with our schools to resolve those matters. Children are safe in Jefferson County public schools. There have been reviews in the past, um, for how, um, investigations were looked at. And we have done different things to address that and make sure that everything is looked at through a, a, a very thorough lens.
I tell parents all the time, don't put your child in that position. So if they're complaining about it, go up to that school and demand that that school do something.
I looked to the principal, kind of like an overhead, like, did you get my message? And she just gave me this, it's been taken care of. I was at his school average twice a week for lunch. I volunteered for everything. It broke down the false security that I had, that I am this involved. They see me this much. And for that, maybe my kid would have some sort of exception.
I know that I can get it out of my mind and tomorrow's like a better day. So I can still make friendships with him.
Seventy-seven days of the first time my son was bullied to the day he died, 77 days in between. And this is why my son is dead. So what did the teacher say? And he said, well, I want you to tell her to stop. And she said, well, how can I help her if your mom has called the principal? And the principals talked to her mom and if your mom can't do it and the principal can't do it, what makes you think that I, that I can stop her? And besides seven, nobody likes the tattletale. He died of being bullied to death. Wow. My kid. Wow, my kid.
There's this idea when you're young, developmentally, you may not understand the permanency of suicide. I don't think sometimes the kids understand there's no coming back from this, this is much younger children.
People always say black people don't do that, yes, here's a picture.
I do think black parents in particular, we try to educate our kids about what it means to be black and how people are gonna engage you in the world. I don't know that we're able to give them the full extent and teach them to the full degree of what those struggles are gonna be like. What parent expects to have to have a race conversation with a child when the child is five, six years old?
I never took the time to teach my son about racial differences, racial inequalities. I never did that because he was ten. I want this little boy to be a little boy.
So I'm gonna end it there. Um, but that was a very powerful story about what children go through. And unfortunately, as you can see from the stats, it's not as rare as we would like to believe that it is. Um, so with me being a mental health professional, understanding that we have to be available, accessible, um, show up for kids and their families. We have to be able to ask kids tough questions and we have to be able to hear tough answers. Because if we don't, children like Seven end up harming themselves. So I didn't wanna depress everybody, but I did wanna drive home the point, the importance of us understanding that children deal with a lot, just like adults do. Um, and like Caprice and David, um, and you Sherrell have said, showing up for kids, being available, listening, validating their existence is really what's important. And even if it's one kid at a time, you're gonna make a difference in that child's life and and that's what I have to share.
That was such a, oh, I I can't even put into words that video.
It was powerful.
It was totally, it was very powerful. And it, because we deal with this every day, it shocks me every time though, every time, just to hear another story. And um, we'll be talking more about um, suicide and violence next month. But just people want the, they want the hurt to stop. And they, um, in the story just shortly, he tried talking to his mom, talking to teachers, talking to somebody and nobody had an answer from him. So when people get hopeless and feel helpless, they want the pain to stop. And like the um, therapist or the reporter said, they don't know that there's no coming back from this. They just want the pain right now to stop. Um, I want to give some resources, we have five minutes, does anybody have like a one-minute closing? Because I wanna make sure we give resources and not just talk about the issue. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, well, this, with Lisa hitting on the suicide, I mean, there, NAMI, NAMI is a, is a great resource. But I'm a, I'm going to plug because this is what I do all day, every day. Um, Stella's Girls, we are a resource. Yes, I'm based in Maryland, but I work with children all around the globe. And we do the social emotional learning, I have my mentor show up. We show up and it's not just the mentoring, we do tutoring, we do STEM, we do cultural. And so we are here, you can follow us on anything on social media at Stella's Girls or go to our website, I'll post it in the chat, I'll post it in the comments. But we are here and and not only just the adults, but I train peer mentors, eleventh and twelfth graders too. And one of the biggest thing we talk about with making sure those teens is suicide, because they all deal with it every single day with someone coming to them about it. So we're a resource for sure.
And I'll make sure I put everyone's information in the comments um, on social media and up on the website. Um, we wanna re, just to reiterate very quickly, to be a safe space to um, to people around you. Because you never know what they have inside that they're looking for someone to talk to and not have to deal with it themselves. Number two, listen, listen to what they're saying, listen to their feelings and how how they feel about it, how they're reacting to it. And the most important out of all of this is do something about what they say, take people seriously. Um, you don't have to have all the answers, but don't leave them alone, help them find the answer. I'm gonna give you these hotline numbers for national because we're just not local, we are, we work globally. So I'm gonna give you the national hotline numbers, I'm gonna put them up on the screen. But um, be a safe place, listen and do something, work with them, have resources, do some research, reach out to coalitions. There's a coalition for domestic violence, for sexual assault, there's a co, probably a coalition for bullying. Um, it's, um, you can go to, um, you can, um, I'm gonna make sure you have that information also. But reach out to community centers and or um, different resources within your community. And I know a lot of them, as Ms. Deja said, one of them is right near her and that's not, that's not gonna work for her. But don't stop looking. You have to be vigilant about getting your answers. And especially for um, the people that you love. I wanna also talk about being, if you don't feel like you're with your own children or the people in your family, sometimes just too close to home to tell, especially with sexual assault, or if it happens to be somebody else in the family and they don't wanna, I don't wanna tell them Uncle so-and-so because he's the favorite or brother so-and-so. Identify other allies that people, your um, loved ones can talk to, whether it's in, at your um, religious center, whether it's at the school. Have these conversations with your young adults. Um, ask them, who do you trust at school? It can be the li, it can be the librarian, it can be the secretary, it can be the nurse, it can be a favorite teacher. Have them identify someone that they absolutely trust and will tell anything to. Whether it's again at school, in a neighborhood, at a community center, your religious center. Think about your team, create a team and be open to be able to say, you can tell me anything. And not give them the backlash of what they tell you, because if they have to hold it in because I'm gonna get in trouble if I tell you this, you never know what that's gonna lead to. So be an open space, a a safe space and have those hard conversations, have those hard conversations. I want to share the um, screen because I wanna be mindful of your time. We, I talk a lot, I love you all so much and I don't want this to end. But I wanna be mindful and share the um, screen for the hotline numbers for um, domestic violence, sexual assault and suicide and depression. Um, suicide and depression, I'm pretty sure you can call and um, also talk about, you know, bullying or something like that. I will make sure I get a number, if there is a number directly for bullying, um. I'm gonna leave it up, I know we're gonna be recording, but I wanna leave it up for people to screenshot or take a picture of it also.
Sherrell, real quick, I think something that's important to say is, as a parent, as a advocate, as an ally for youth, if you hear them mention suicide, even if it's a joke.
Yes.
Please, please advocate on their behalf. Then come into you. Yeah, exactly. And them coming to you and them being able to even summon the courage to bring it out, however that may be. And like I said, it could just be them joking about it. It's better to take the precautions. It's better to reach out to these resources, it's better to reach out to someone like Ms. Diamond. If you know Sherrell personally, if you know Caprice personally, if you know Lisa personally, it's better to reach out to someone like that and to do your due diligence and to have them talk to somebody that can try to provide a resource, that can try to provide them linkages to care. Because you don't wanna be in a situation where you don't take that comment seriously.
Yes, stop everything right then and there, ask them, do you want to harm yourself or kill yourself? Ask them, do they have a plan? Call nine-one-one and yeah, it'll be better for them to be mad at you and committed than them not be here and you be regretful. It's better that you into, we, this is, we're here to help you intervene and the um, interrupt the process that is escalating to a threatening behavior of harm, self-harm or harm to others that could possibly lead to suicide or violence to someone else. Um, and again, we'll be talking more about this next month, um, can everybody see the screen? Okay, sometimes my screen doesn't pop up. So next month, we're talking about mental wellness, addressing the cracks in our mental wellness, because we all have cracks. Some of them are deeper than others. You know, there are some days where we're just need a self-care day or something just gonna go right and we all have been exposed to trauma. But we're gonna dive into this with some amazing people um, who work the front lines with this, have experienced this personally. Gonna be sharing their own stories about depression and suicide, I'll be sharing my own. I don't just talk about it, I've lived these things. I will run up on you and your kid, my other kids in the community will tell you, Ms. Diamond will come and sit in lunch at the high school, middle school, like, what's up? You know, because I care about you, I'll meet you at the mall, we got social distancing, but I'm gonna be that chick, I'm gonna be in your inbox on your phone. And I'm pretty sure Ms. Caprice is the same way, Ms. Lisa, she run up, she just, she probably don't even, like, she don't even need to squeegee her windshield glow, but she just go anyway. She just go down that street anyway and David is loved in the community, Coach Dave, he will always be Coach Dave. I want to, um, I wanna stop because I wanna be mindful of people's times, because I can talk. Um, any closing remarks, anything, I will make sure everybody's contact information. I love you all for doing what you do every day. Thank you, I know it's tiresome, I know it's also, you know, so rewarding, so rewarding. So thank you for being the pillars and the gatekeepers where you are and for the people that you empower and impact around the world, thank you all.
Yeah, I have just, just few, well, closing thing is that I think it's, you know, David hit on it, but just listen. We have to be active listeners and we have to be patient. Because they will tell you if if they trust you and believe you and for parents out there, you are not alone. You also need someone to listen to you.
Yes.
You know, so don't feel like you're doing this alone, because we are all in this together. COVID has been hard and it is still hard. So parents, you gotta find someone in your circle too and be intentional. Definitely be intentional, some happy hours, virtual happy hour, whether it's coffee, tea, wine, whatever your pleasure is, you have to do something for yourself as well.
Yes, and know that you are doing amazing where you are, we all are evolving and improving. So we wanna make sure that we celebrate you for what you have been doing, it is hard. So we just wanted to make sure we gave you tools and insight to help you and your family thrive. So this is us helping and just being your community family. Please reach out, um, share, like, join us next week, next, next month, sorry, next week. But feel free to email me anytime, I am the resource lady, I will find an answer for you. Um, so this is, we're just giving you information now, but this is not in. Please reach out so that we can connect you with the help that you need. We good? Thank you all, thank you all for joining, I'm so excited, thank you all, have a good night. Thank you, have a good night.